All right, I think we are ready. Welcome to our October Finance Committee meeting. We've got a lot on the agenda today. But it's all good information and we could all answer some questions and some exciting stuff to move forward. So the first thing we will review is we received our audit for the city of Norwood. So Mr. Miracle just wanted to kind of give an update on that and how everything was looking.
Yeah, thank you. We had a clean audit this year and just so everyone's watching, on the auditorium website now, we have, and we'll get that a little bit later, I think we're going to close it down here, but all of our audits coming back to 2000 are on the website.
For, we have a link there, you can just click on it. And, uh, do you see it on there?
Yep.
Awesome. Yeah, so we did have two, there was two items on there. One we've already taken care of, it was regarding the password policy, which was already done. And then the other was our emergency plan, which I know they're working on, but I think perhaps Mrs. Winterbauer was going to ask for an update at our next Finance Committee meeting, so we can check with Mr. Powers on that. So that was good news. That was for fiscal year end, 12/31/23.
Yes, we have anything else with the website?
Yeah, you want me to go into that?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I added the, as previously mentioned, we added the audits on there. The second thing that I added was how to report fraud in the state of Ohio. There are four ways to report fraud, and there is a link to that as well. You can submit a form, which is on there, just click on it. And then there is a phone number, 866-FRAUD-O-H. The third way is email, and that's fraudohio@OhioAuditor.gov. And then you can send them a letter to the Ohio Auditor. And that is 65 East State Street, PO Box 1140, Columbus, Ohio 43215. And that is on the website as well. So I thought it was important to put that on there, useful information. We're going to continue to add more to the Auditor's website for our transparency, of course. And easy for you to just click on the link and check out what you would like to check out.
And I clicked all the links, they all worked just fine, at least in Google Chrome. Presumably, hopefully, in other browsers, they would too. Yep, everything looks like it is all there, as it should be.
Good. Yeah, I've gone on there and tested it a few times this week, so, success.
And then the end of month reports. I guess we can, we were, last meeting, we were looking at the payroll forecasting. So I didn't know if you wanted to?
Yeah, sent an email to Mr. Powers. And what he had replied back was that we'll wait to this cycle here, to the end of October, and then we're going to review it again. So we can review that in our November Finance Committee meeting. And I can forward that to you, what his reply was with the email, so you can kind of check that out. So, didn't seem to be any concern, but just something we'd like to make sure we're keeping an eye on.
Any other questions with the reports at all?
The end of month reports?
Yes.
The PDFs that we got, there were 703 pages of them. I was going to start printing them out. Is there, is it better to focus on the Excel document? Not to ignore those, but?
Yeah.
I mean, that was drinking from a fire, I was trying to take that in.
Yeah, and I understand completely, and something that Mrs. Winterbauer and I have been discussing. One of the tools that we use at where I work at Monti is Power BI reports. And essentially, what we're doing is extracting the information from our current ERP system. And then we just manipulate the data into what we want to see. The beauty of this is, Mr. Gerton, is I come in in the morning, these reports are generated every, whatever time you set it up. At Monti, it's 5:20 in the morning, so when I come in, I go to Power BI and then you can review those reports. And my goal for the city is to do the same thing, to work with the Finance Committee. And say, what would you like to see? What, you know, as a group, we can say, what is important for you? Because there's, I agree with you 100%, you know, getting a bunch of documents and then expecting you to wade through them in a week is, I think, that's not really fair. And it's like you said, trying to drink water out of a fire hose. So the end of month reports, I think we can work on that. Also, the spreadsheet that we do. And like I was telling Mrs. Winterbauer, we can look at this from 30,000 feet and do summaries. And then we can also drill down into more detail. And I think perhaps it might be useful if I even send you one of my reports from work, just to kind of show you what we do.
Key metrics?
Yeah, we have canned reports. And I've always, it's always been my experience that those aren't exact, there's always something missing that would be useful. You know, one example, I have a, it's a really long report, and for whatever reason, they didn't total it. So you're, you know, you're downloading into an Excel spreadsheet and then it totally, so. And in the last year, plus, maybe even two years, we have a gentleman I work with that, that is, his function at work is to, someone will request information in a way that isn't able to be pulled out of the system. And I think it's easier to read, it also makes it useful for us. And I think that is something that, if we set it up like we do at work, you can look at it anytime you want. It's going to say, hey, every Monday, there it is, you can go in and look at it. We could even do it daily, weekly, whatever increment of time that we would want to do that. And then we can, we read that here. And the beauty of that is, we could look at it in real time with each other while we're sitting here. Rather than trying to look at an Excel spreadsheet that is about that wide, and I can't get it all on my screen anyway. So, I understand, that's something we've been working on, like I said, for a couple of years. And I think that's a project that I would like to bring here. So, the next step, I've been talking to VIP for probably the last week, trying to work out the bugs with the Ohio checkbook, which I think we finally cracked the code this afternoon. So, that's what, you know, here, in the near future, that's what I want to do. I'm keeping my fingers crossed, I might even be able to do something at the next Finance Committee meeting. So let's, so I think that's, I think it's important to be able to have information that is useful, that we can look at here together, rather than saying, hey, here's the, however, how many reports there are, I can't even remember, it's quite a few, 10, 12, something like that. And I think the first one I looked at was 158 pages. We don't really need to see all of that, I think, pull the important information off of that. So that's, I hear you. And I think we've already started down that path. And I think you'll be pleased when you, when you see it.
Me, me?
Sorry. No, I was just going to say, I am every morning, so when I look, I look at them.
It's, I mean, on one hand, it's very helpful that we've got all that information at our fingertips. I mean, I mean, there was every single payee that, you know, we and the city gave a check to was there. I mean, I could see every single basketball fee, basketball league fee that, you know, we collected. So, I mean, there was a ton of information there, you're reporting all of it to us, so I appreciate that, it's very transparent. And from what I remember of Ohio Checkbook, and I know that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
That probably will have the, I mean, and that won't just be accessible to me, me, that would be accessible to anybody who's got access to the internet.
Exactly.
And you can be specific on what particular fund you're looking at. So you're, if you're only interested in recreation, you can just look at recreation, for instance, so.
Yeah, and then with the, with the Power BI, I'd like to have those on the website as well. When they update, we can put them on there, and you can review them straight from the website. So the goal is to have complete transparency on our website and to have as much useful information there as we possibly can. And that's easy to read and digest and not just throw thousands of pages on there and say, hey, now you got to go, you know, sort through that, you know. I don't think that's something that we want to do.
Yeah, I'm excited. I use that a lot. When I was in management, it was just so nice to have those reports. You just sit down, what trends? Because there's thousands of data points, but you just come in, you're like, all right, this is what we're trending, this is what everything looks like, so.
And the other nice thing I like about it is, it's not an email. So it does get lost in your email.
Yeah, it's always there in a separate.
It's there, you know, it's, we'll have that accessible for you. And, you know, and sometimes I would, I would imagine if I tried to email, you know, some of those things, you know.
Memory.
Yeah, it must be too big to go through, but, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And, so the next audit is the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District audit that we did not meet the criteria for.
Yeah, if you, if you would like for me to. I had been going on to the Treasurer's website, you know, when this, when I want to put the link on there for the Auditor. You know, I was going in there, and all of a sudden, I saw this audit, and I'm like, I'm not familiar with that. I don't remember talking about that. And so, it wasn't a very long audit, but in terms of, you know, number of pages, but it had, it was for, and what caught my eye was it was for the last, for 22 and 23, right? And it said that we had not, there was a list, that's why I sent it to you, of the things that we needed to do. And so I was like, hmm, we need to talk about this at the Finance Committee. I sent an email out, hey, can someone tell us, you know, give us some direction on this? Because I was not familiar with it at all. And after I'd sent the email, I think there was quite a few people that weren't familiar with it. So, and then, and I was hoping that, you know, I think Mr. Bonzel probably knows more about it than most people. So I was hoping that he could maybe help us, enlighten us a little bit with that.
Yeah, and I'll try to keep it super quick for, you know, the schedule standpoint. So the Norwood Energy Special Improvement District was created by council in 2018 for the purpose of allowing property owners to voluntarily do special energy improvement kind of operations kind of at their, their buildings or properties. These are usually big properties, like the two that we have was the Old Med Pace Building, which is the data center now, 4620 Wesley. And then Central Park, I'm pretty sure, the, one of these main office buildings here. So basically, it allows you to borrow money, and then the money, the loan is backed by just a assessment on their property taxes for such a long period, during such a time. So anyways, long story short is, there were two active projects. Both those projects were completed in 2020 or around then. I was appointed to the board in, when it was first started, so the, I was on it. I think the former mayor was on it, and then the new mayor was on it. And there were three other people. It sounds like Mrs. Fransen was appointed at one point, and that was not communicated to them. So, all of a sudden, I get the email about the audit, about, from the Auditor sent it to all of the board members they had on file. So they had still had me on file. You know, and I saw those, I saw those things and immediately reached out to them to figure out what we were going to do to rectify them. Wasn't quite sure, frankly, who to reach out to about it. I mean, I was working with them, but it would have been, I'm glad that Keith is engaged now too with it. But, long story short is, they are working on some of those things, so there's going to be a board meeting. And I don't know, have they reached out so far?
Not yet, but I saw in Keith's email that they were planning to have one in November.
Yes, yes, so we'll, yeah, so basically, there will be a board meeting. The records custodian, I was actually just reviewing audits for Energy Special Improvement Districts across the state. I just reviewed like four of them. And three out of the four have the exact same records custodian issue on there. So, needs to get fixed, don't get me wrong, but I think it's, it sounds like it's kind of common with these energy districts. But, the reason that, so then they were pushing back with the state auditors, because they're like, hey, we don't have any active projects, did we need to meet? And they're like, well, you really do need to meet because of a, you know, just to ensure that like, everything is still functioning appropriately, which I think is totally great, I mean, I agree with it completely. So, yeah, so anyways, I found out from the email, I was like, oh, I guess I am on this board, when I got that email. And then thankfully, Ken Miracle and Emily and others, actually Keith is the one that remembers. Oh, wait, no, we appointed Emily to that. So, because again, I was like, I hadn't seen any emails on it in years, frankly. So when I got that, like I said, it was a little bit concerning. But they are working, it's working to get fixed, and I have a feeling when you get the next audit, that it'll be good to go. The other thing is, I just did want to note that when I was looking at these other audits too, like, all of them seem to be two-year audits. So that kind of does seem the norm for these ESIDs. And the detail on these audits are definitely significantly less than what Ken has to provide it looks like, because it's like four pages where our city audit, if you want to know, like 70 or 80 or more, so.
104.
But anyways, that's the information that I have.
Yes, I do recall volunteering to be appointed to that board in 2022 in January, before I knew anything about anything. So, now, now I know more about stuff, and I'm looking forward to being on it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I think the other thing is just to keep it on the council's, I don't know if it was on the January 1st, 2024 inauguration agenda. So I think that also kind of let it slip too, because, and I think it's just one of those things, like, I think we'll have like the tax review, Board of Appeals will be on it, that'll be on it. And to just keep that, you know, keep that going, because there isn't going to be a lot of work on this board for, you know, most of the time. But it's still there, so that if a property owner wants to come and tackle something, then.
Yeah, we do have some larger properties that might want to use it, like larger empty properties might want to use it in the future.
Yeah, and even if they're not, like UDF could have used it, if they were doing much energy improvements in their renovations. So, it also could just be in education, I don't know if everybody knows about it either, so.
Well, that's, and I was trying to like wrap my head around it. So is it basically just like, they come to the board and they say, we have these plans we want to do? And it's just a tax incentive to them, and the board approves it or doesn't approve it? Like this is worth X amount of incentives or not?
I think it's more the fact that they keep the debt off their books, is what I think the goal is for it, for the property owners. Because then it's not, they're not carrying it, I mean, ultimately, they're going to be responsible, like if the property burns down, like they'll have to pay back those, you know, loans. But in general, I think it's so that it just continues on. And then, the other benefit is, most, a lot of these property owners have like triple net leases, where the actual tenants, they split the property tax bill among all the tenants. So basically, it's another benefit, they can just group it in that, and then the tenants pay it and the property owners don't. So, Mr. Gerton, I didn't create it, but I, yeah, it's like, I know I say that, just kidding. But I think, I think that's another like benefit of it as well for the property owners, from my limited understanding of it, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarity.
Absolutely.
Some more to come on that, we'll update when we get updated. And I'll add that to our list of making sure the next swearing-in, we have all the appointments. Because I feel like that's come up a lot the last year or so, of not having the right people appointed.
Yeah, I feel like there's so many things that are only relevant every two or three years, and so it's easy for them to fly under the radar until you need it.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, so Ohio Checkbook, Mr. Miracle got to know a lot of people today, troubleshooting, getting that going.
Yeah, yeah, my, my new best friends at Ohio Treasurer and the VIP. There was a, when we were running the report, we were getting an error message. So, so I was able to get ahold of VIP today. And they have a really nice feature, I was unfamiliar with, they can, you can share your screen with them. And so Jennifer was kind enough to get on there, and we worked our way through that. So we were able to generate the report. I sent it to the Ohio Treasurer late this afternoon. And then we're going to look at it prior to putting it on the Ohio Checkbook website. So hopefully, in the next couple of days, Monday at the latest, you'll see the Ohio Checkbook on the, link on the Auditor's website. So, little educational process, but it was, it worked out fine.
Yeah, I'm excited for that to be active. Okay, and then the next thing is the Norwood Board of Health audit. I didn't see really anything of concern of that. More or less, this is another thing we might do at the next meeting, is just curious on, I know that the Board of Health is separate from the city of Norwood, but there's definitely some financial overlap there. So just kind of get some clarity on what the city's responsibilities are with that. Is there anything else?
No, that was, it was a kind of a much smaller audit as well, as you saw. And, and I think next month, when we meet, we can obviously talk to Mr. Moore in the interim. But when we come, just get some, like Mrs. Winterbauer said, some clarity on that, so. I just wanted to get that out there.
Because Marcus did do some work for them, so.
Yes, yes, he did.
And, so the next thing is the policy and procedure for approving debt lease and agreements. So this is something that's come up, and we're looking at, we're working on an ordinance for it. I don't know if you kind of want to go into the background or?
Yeah, just a little bit. You know, one of the things that, you know, that I want to see through is policies and procedures for everything that we do in the office. And to get that in front of Finance Committee, and get that in front of council, and then get a resolution. And then as we're, as we're moving forward, you'll say, you know, hey, how do we do that? Well, we've got a policy right here. One of the things that we've run into is that many times, there is not anything written down. Perhaps there was some tribal knowledge in the past, but I'm not big on tribal knowledge, I like things written down. So, we had, many times, there are debt agreements or lease agreements that will come through. And what I want to see moving forward is that they start here. That, you know, Mrs. Fransen, Mr. Gerton, Mrs. Winterbauer, Mr. Braden, the process starts here. So I reached out to the Auditor of State and talking to Anna Mary. And she had written a brief, one-page, it's pretty, I mean, it was pretty to the point. You know, sometimes you don't need 10 pages of a procedure, but it was something that I had asked, you know, from her. And I want to get it on the agenda, like to have it on the next agenda for your review and council's review and ultimately approval. Because I think it's, it's very important with that, that process, that, you know, we, the review starts here. You know, you know, what are the terms of this debt agreement, or what are the terms of this lease agreement? How many years? Those types of things should be clearly spelled out and approved here, prior to moving forward with it. So, and I think it's something that we should review. And then, as we did this month, we gave it to you in an email form. There was some Excel, there were some attachments there. What I'd like to do, moving forward, is to put that into a form, an Excel spreadsheet, so that we can quickly go down and assess those and see where we are, you know, in the life of those. So I think, you know, policies and procedures, those are ultimately what we want to do. But I thought this one, seeing that we didn't have one, wanted to make it a priority and get that to you. And then we can get it for your review, and then get it to council, and implement that as quickly as possible. Now, as we move forward out of fiscal emergency, we might need a more detailed report perhaps, or maybe make some changes there. But we could, we could do that, you know, at a later time. But I'm, I'm very keen on getting that approved quickly, because I think it's, I think it's important. But, in my opinion, Finance Committee should be reviewing all of those requests. That there's a, we start, here's where we start, and here's where we go to, and then ultimately, it's to council, and then, then we go from there. Then they can enter into that agreement, whatever, whatever it is.
And seeing that forecasting, so if we sign up for this amount of debt, this is what our forecasting looks like. And so what kind of has been happening is, you know, the Auditor's office will sign off on it, comes to council, we vote yea or nay. And then it goes to the Finance Committee that was formed because we're in fiscal. And then they do all the research and see if it's doable. Which, in hopes we get out of fiscal emergency, I would love that to be on the forefront. Because in my opinion, if something's coming to council, the research should be done, that information should be available. And we should, you know, have that understanding of, is this a good way to spend the city's money moving forward?
Right, and if you have any questions or concerns, we bring them up at that point. And then whoever initiated that request will be here, right? And then we can ask, ask them to clarify or, you know, explanation on certain points or whatever. So, I just think it's fiscally responsible for us and also completely transparent to have that policy. This is the way we're going to do it, so there's no question of, you know, everyone knows the process, so we know where to start. And I think that's just good governance there.
And it makes me feel more comfortable, like I have no opposition to adding debt when needed, but knowing how much debt we're actually adding and what the forecast is will make me feel more or less comfortable with my vote and be able to be a little more informed, which is always good.
Right, and also our lease agreements as well. You should know all of the things that we have a lease on, and what the terms and so forth with those agreements as well.
And I think, like, I was going back to the reports too, of residents can see, this is how much money we've spent on streets this year. Like, you know, these are pretty big numbers, and again, your street might not be paved, but we are working where, you know, it is happening. So I think that would be another good, just, we have those numbers, those are out there.
Right.
Thought of something, and then I, any other thoughts or? So hopefully, we'll have something a little bit more in writing at the next Finance meeting to go over, you know.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think that's, that's something I'm kind of pushing pretty hard on right now. And had email back and forth with the Auditor of State, so we're going to get it in front of you quickly.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please.
Do you by any chance have a copy of the condensed budget, like the proposed budget for, not for next year, because I know that's not been done yet, but the one that we're working under with the FRP?
Yeah, yeah, I can send that to you.
Okay, because I mean, I've got the, the full end of month, well, the forecasts and a lot of that stuff. But I'm trying to start doing some calculations to see how much money are we overspending on our budget? Because, you know, we are right now, we're, we're doing a lot of capital investments that I think are important. But I'm still curious to, to know for myself in some snapshots, how much money are we spending that's improvement capital stuff versus how much is a sustainable budget to, to look at the next few years?
Sure, of course.
So yeah, if you could get that to me, I would appreciate that. So I could start doing some nerd math and, and making up some mighty little like KPI reports.
Yeah, will do.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm excited for that. Again, just kind of getting more transparency out there and getting everyone on, on board with where all the money's going.
And how much is coming in? Because I know, I mean, the story that I've always heard, you know, before I started running for election was just how broke we are, how broke we are. And that's not true. And I mean, we're, we're really heavily investing in, in capital expenses that are going to improve things. But I want to be able to tell people how much of our budget is, is spent towards streets so that, you know, we can chew bubble gum and walk at the same time and tell them we're still fixing other things and, and fixing roads.
Okay, do we have any appropriations to review or?
I think there were two, recreation, small appropriation on there. So I think that's on the agenda for this evening.
Yeah, there's like a, there's an ARPA grant and then two 7500s, things were combined into 115,000.
Yeah, that was the rec.
Yeah.
And then I'll pass this around. Mr. Miracle's been working on a purchase order change form. So if someone wants to change their purchase order, make it an official if you want to, I can show this.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we have audit trails on everything that we do. So if someone does have a current purchase order that's open and would like to amend that in some way, I think it's important that we have a form for that, you know,
Thank you.
that we can fill out, submit that, well, obviously with approval. And then, and then that will come to my office and then we can take whatever measures they want, increase, decrease, whatever. But, you know, just going back to policies, procedures, also forms, you know, when was this form approved? You know, give that form a number. Those are some of the things I, you know, I'm used to doing. So, you know, if there is an audit, you look at this, oh, this form was created in, you know, November of 2024. Then we've kind of got to know when, when it was approved and, does it need to be updated? You look at a form, you know, maybe it's a few years old, maybe we might want to check, check that out again. But I'd like to get to the point of numbering the forms and putting approval dates on there. I think that, that's just good practice. And then we can have an audit trail if someone says, hey, that PO was changed in some, well, here was the approval right there. There wasn't a phone call or email or some type of conversation. Again, it's making sure that we do things the right way and that we're documenting those and that we're creating an audit trail. Just good business.
Yeah.
But it looks simple, not paperwork.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't need.
Don't need much paperwork.
It doesn't need to be complicated. You know, I think sometimes people are, hey, this is a form, it needs a, no, no, it doesn't. It just needs to be clear and concise.
Yeah, it's like in science. If you don't write it down, you're just messing around.
Doesn't exist.
Okay, so for new business, I did receive two claims that they wanted us to approve or deny. Ms. Hayes did some amazing research for us to make it hopefully simple. So one claim was damage occurred up the street from where Public Works was working. This individual drove through the barricade to inform them that she thought it was from them. Basically she had a tool that was into her, her tire. It was, they spoke to Public Works, it was not a tool that belongs to them. And also they just did not feel comfortable with the situation where they were working at a barricade and this individual came in and started blaming them for it. There's a picture of the tool and all of that. It's, again, Public Works confirmed it did not come from them. So, and also another note on both these claims is the city, Mr. Moore, if I'm, I want to make sure I'm saying this right. The city is responsible for the deductible for these claims.
If, if the city's going to award the claim,
Yeah.
it's only, it's only whatever they're out of pocket after their insurance company comes through. So if this like for most autos, a $500 deductible or whatever,
Okay.
then we would be responsible for the deductible, not anything the insurance company pays for.
So ironically enough, both of these are zero. The other one was the individual was driving on Montgomery Road in front of Sorento's and stated they hit a pothole on the far right lane and damaged both of their tires from that pothole. Again, Ms. Hayes talked to some, talked to individuals who are tire experts. The one issue, which Mr. Gary's brought up a lot, if you're going 25 and hit a pothole, your tires should be fine. And the, the tire individual said, again, if both of those tires were to hit it going at even an increased speed, if the tires were in good condition, they should have been fine. So.
Right in front of Sorento's?
Yeah.
I drive that all the time.
Yeah, so.
I just went by there. I don't remember there being a, I mean, it could have been fixed or.
This was, what day? Middle of October, September?
Yeah, 9/13. So the two main things were, if you're going 25, should be fine. Also that a pothole shouldn't, you know, both tie, you know, maybe one, but they were like, well, both tires and there probably was an issue prior, so.
Yeah, for me, I'm, I'm fine denying both of those.
Okay.
Because that's not our tool. I mean, there's so many contractors and handymen that can come through.
Yeah.
I would understand.
And Public Works did look at the tool. They, you know, they didn't have any of those onsite, nor were they using those where they were working. I know it's probably frustrating with all the work going on, there's some stuff in the streets, but yeah, check them out, let me know.
There's been a lot of construction vehicles.
Yeah.
But there's really no way to prove unless it fell right out and then it hit your car.
Yeah.
And she drove through the barricade, not well.
I mean, I wouldn't drive through the barricade personally. Yeah, it looks like a.
Pair of pliers.
Yeah. It's weird.
At this point, I'm, I'm comfortable denying both of these as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with denying both.
Okay.
Because, yeah, two, two tires.
Yeah. All right, I will let them know, appreciate that. Mr. Bonzel, anything from you or?
Uh, thank you. No, nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I just wondered, did you discuss council's contractual key at all, clerk of council, for advertising?
I, I had sent an email to, to Noah,
Right.
Mr. Powers, and we need to know just what, what funds, what keys.
Okay, I just didn't know how far along that, that had gotten. I have volunteered some, some funds, so.
Yeah, I'm just waiting, waiting for a reply.
Yeah, so if we get to the point where, oh no, we can't have this public hearing because we can't do the advertising, I've just told Kat, just issue the requisition in my key because we've got to get that stuff done, so.
Is there a specific date on that?
That, that one has been done and the one that's the public hearing for the community area, whatever that's called. That has, that, that advertisement is also in and that and for the, the two PUD overlays or the two PUD plans are, are, those, those ads have been taken.
Okay.
But there's, I'm not sure exactly the status of legislation that's been passed and hasn't been advertised. And I know that, I just know that they're short and we owe the Inquirer more money than they have of it than the, than the council's keys have available. And we, the sum was shifted, but.
Yeah, last, last council, last council we did, they, they asked for 10.
Yeah.
And when I spoke to Noah, he was, at that time, he was able to move five. And so I had sent an email saying, you know, we took care of five. And I think Angela even replied, she'd spent four of it already.
Right.
And then I had sent an email to Mr. Powers and said, we need additional $5,000. Just let me know what key so we can do the, the correct appropriation.
Okay, I just didn't know if that had been resolved and was going to be on council's agenda, added to the appendix tonight or if that's going to be another week's ahead.
I haven't, I haven't had any reply.
Yeah, all right.
All right. Well, thank you all for your time tonight and we'll go ahead and close out the meeting.
Thank you.